Good evening, everyone. I now call the meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for, call the roll, please? That's kind of loud there. Hello?
Mr. Fonge.
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray.
Here.
Ms. Cherry.
Here.
Mr. Kilgore.
Here.
Mr. Samuels.
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse.
Here.
Dr. Mason.
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present and accounted for. And we are fortunate to have with us tonight Mr. Zion Parks, who's a junior at Phoebus High School, who's going to lead us in our opening today with the Pledge of Allegiance, and however he see fits to do so, and everything else he's going to do for us. Zion, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. If we could all please stand.
Deep voice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Voice on you.
Good evening. My name is Zion Parks, and I'm a senior this year at Phoebus High School. I'm here tonight representing my school and community with the executive principal, Mr. Cokely, and the rest of the Phoebus administration, such as Dr. I, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Brown, and Mr. Wofford, but he's not here. This evening, I'd like to open with an adaptation of Amanda Gorman's poem, "The Hill We Climb", which she read at the last presidential inauguration. I chose this poem because it represents not only the struggles of our nation, but the struggles and victories of my very community in Hampton Roads. I connect with Gorman's words on a daily basis because every day I think about what's next and what I want to do for this world to lead for the next generation. So without further ado, I'll read the poem. When day comes, we ask ourselves, where can we find light in this never-ending shade? The loss we carry, a sea we must wave, we braved the belly of the beast. We've learned that quiet isn't always peace, and the norms and notions of what just is isn't always just is. And yet the dawn is ours before we knew it. Somehow, we do it. Somehow, we weathered and witnessed a nation that isn't broken, but simply unfinished. We, the successors of a country in a time where a skinny black girl descended from slaves and raised by a single mother, can dream of becoming president, only to find herself reciting for one. And yes, we are far from polished, far from pristine, but that doesn't mean we are striving to form a union that is perfect. We are striving to forge our union with purpose, to compose a country committed to all cultures, colors, characters, and conditions of man. And so we lift our gaze not to what stands between us, but what stands before us. We close the divide because we know to put our future first, we must first put our differences aside. We lay down our arms so we can reach out our arms to one another. We seek harm to none and harmony for all. Let the globe, if nothing else, say this is true, that even as we grieved, we grew; that even as we hurt, we hoped; that even as we tired, we tried; that we'll forever be tied together victorious. In this truth, in this faith, we trust, for while we have our eyes on the future, history has its eyes on us. This is the era of just redemption. We feared at its inception. We did not feel prepared to be the heirs of such a terrifying hour, but within it we find the power to author a new chapter, to offer hope and laughter to ourselves. We will not be turned around or interrupted by intimidation because we know our inaction and inertia will be the inheritance of the next generation. Become the future. Our blunders become their burdens, but one thing is certain: if we merge mercy with might and might with right, then love becomes our legacy and change our children's birthright. So let us leave behind a country better than the one we were left. Every breath from my bronze pounded chest, we will raise this wounded world into a wondrous one. And every known nook of our nation in every corner called our country. Our people diverse and beautiful, we will emerge battered and beautiful. When day comes, we step out of the shade of flame and unafraid. The new dawn blooms as we free it, for there is always light, if only we're brave enough to see it, if only we're brave enough to be it.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us and just listening to your voice, you know. You had a role in the recent production and the film, the short film at Phoebus, correct?
Yes, I did.
Tell us your role in it. Share your stardom with the viewing public.
So it's kind of a small role, which, you know, it's still kind of crazy, you know what I'm saying? I played the brother, his name was Emery Banks II, but sadly, they took out some of my scenes, so the only thing you'll really hear of me in the movie is, um, he's here and a bunch of bodily motions like, you know. So kind of a big, small role, but, you know, it was a great experience, though, great experience.
Now tell everybody what the name of the short film was.
The short film's called Truth of Lies. It'll be at the Film Festival in Charlottesville, if you guys want to go see it. Not promoting, but promoting.
All right. Thank you very much. Now what academy are you in over at Phoebus?
I'm in the Digital Video Production Academy.
Okay, good. I see you're a proud academy principal over there, just a little shout-out over there. That's all right, that's good. And what do you plan to do when you graduate?
So I would like to go into college for film and production, or to simply be an actor, or for sports, such as competition cheerleading, so those are two really big, like, things I would want to do in the future.
Okay, well now's the time to start applying for some colleges and all, and getting those applications in. Early decisions are the best decisions, all right?
You're right.
Thank you. So board members' comments or anything you'd like to say?
I just, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just think Zion, what you read was just awesome.
Thank you.
It was just so inspirational. That's the first thing, the words. But your delivery was fantastic.
Thank you.
I mean, I thought I was sitting here listening to somebody on the Senate floor. You are awesome. And you're going to have a great career, I can tell already, not so much because of your voice, which is amazing, but your poise. I watched how you answered the questions from the chair, and I'm just proud to say that you're one of our students in Hampton City Schools, I really am.
Thank you.
And in listening to what you read, three things struck me, and that's quiet is not always peace, what just is isn't always justice, but my favorite that you read, do not be interrupted by intimidation, and I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Fonge?
I would just pay you back off of my board member. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was just a very thought-provoking piece. Thank you for sharing it with us on this evening.
Of course.
It was just so hopeful, and I think that's, you know, what I could take away from it, just provides a lot of hope for what could be, and I'm just so glad you're thinking in that vein versus the opposite.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So real quick, tell us who you have here with you. I know you mentioned some folks in the beginning, but we want to get them to stand this time when you mention who they are.
So we'll go down the line.
Okay.
This is Ms. Jackson. This is Mr. Cokely. That's Ms. Brown. And that is the one and only Dr. I. Ms. Parks, my beautiful mother.
Well, thank you all for joining Zion with us tonight, and thank you all for sharing him with you, with us, and especially thanks for showing up for Zion every day at Phoebus High School and being able to produce a wonderful, proud portrait of a Hampton graduate. So thank you, and thank you, Zion. We'll be over there looking for you again soon, all right?
All right. Thank you.
All right. So moving along with tonight's agenda, item 1.03, the adoption of tonight's agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Banks Gray that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Banks Gray.
Aye.
Ms. Cherry.
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels.
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse.
Aye.
Ms. Fonge.
Aye.
Dr. Mason.
Aye. Motion carries. So at this time, I will turn the mic over to Ms. Kelly Gorrell for our recognitions component.
Say Zion was a little bit taller than me, so I need to lower that mic. Well, thank you, Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray, members of our school board, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and members of the Hampton City Schools family. We have several special guests in attendance this evening from Joint Base Langley-Eustis who are going to present the first recognition for the evening. So at this time, I'd like to invite Colonel Matthew Altman to the podium to first introduce his respective staff members who are joining him this evening, and then he is going to lead the first recognition. It's all yours.
I will say it would be very difficult to follow that last presentation, and I'm okay with that because clearly the future is bright in our country and right here in Hampton as well, so what a fantastic presentation that was, and I start here inspired with that, so thanks for letting me join you for that. Ladies and gentlemen of the Hampton City School Board, thank you for allowing us to join your meeting tonight. I'm Colonel Matthew Altman, I'm the Installation Commander of Joint Base Langley-Eustis, and with me, and if it's okay, I'd like to invite them to the podium with me, I have Chief Master John Obermark from our 633rd Communications Squadron, who's representing our Command Chief, and I have Ms. Carolyn Williams, who is our school liaison program manager. If it's okay, I'd like to invite them to the podium as well. So tonight, on behalf of the soldiers, the airmen, families of Joint Base Langley-Eustis, we're here to formally recognize Ms. Ann Bain, who has recently retired from her longstanding role as a Director of Community and Legislative Relations for the Hampton City School Division. Now if Ann would please join us at the podium as well up here, I'd like to brag on her just for a moment. Ann, I'd like to take a moment to highlight the 19 years you've spent as a pillar of unwavering support to the Hampton community and especially its military families. Ann made it her mission to work directly with families, guiding them through the process of selecting the right schools for their children within the Hampton City School system. Not only did she offer invaluable insights about the school system, but she also took the extra step of personally arranging visits to various schools where families could meet with principals and teachers. Her commitment extended beyond education. Ann was a key player in the Hampton Military Affairs Committee, where she concentrated on initiatives and events that supported military children and their families within the community. Ann was also an integral member of the Langley Civic Leaders Association, where she made sure that our senior leaders had a thorough understanding of the Hampton City School Division. Additionally, she led the charge every April during the month of the military child, orchestrating events and encouraging students, staff, and teachers to wear purple as a tribute to our military-connected youth. In doing so, she made thousands of children over decades feel seen and valued for their unique experiences and contributions to the military family, creating a sense of community and belonging. Ann's support didn't stop there. She was a valuable asset to the Commander's Key Spouse Program and was a frequent presence at our newcomers' orientations. In summary, Ms. Ann Bain has been nothing short of a blessing for our soldiers, our airmen, and their families, providing unparalleled service that has enriched our community in countless ways. And on behalf of our entire JBLE community and the 633rd Air Base Wing, it's my great honor to present her with the Department of the Air Force Commander's Award for Public Service, and it's okay, I would like to present this at this time up on the stage. Thank you. So it says, "The Department of the Air Force presents the Commander's Award for Public Service, Ms. Ann Bain." And Ms. Ann Bain disdems herself by merit of service motivated by patriotism and civic responsibility to the United States Air Force. After 19 years of exceptional service, she retired as the Director of Community and Government Relations for Hampton City Schools, where she was resolutely committed to advocating for military families and participating in the community. Ms. Bain's contributions kept key for the finest traditions of service to our service members and reflect great credit on herself and her family. Thank you for all you've done for us, and congratulations. We've got to click.
And before you all leave the stage, would the board and Dr. Haynes come around to get a picture with everyone? And Ann's family as well? All right, tall people in the back, Ms. Bain's in the front. Absolutely. Okay. Dr. Haynes, do you want to come around? And Mr. Kilgore, can I get you to come over on this side? There we go. All right, we're going to look here first. Look here first.
One, two, and three.
All right, and then me, please. Hold on, I've got to get all of you on there. All right, one, two, three, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Good to see you, ma'am.
That was wonderful. And we do have one more recognition this evening, so for that final recognition, I'm going to ask Dr. Haynes to actually please proceed to the microphone to assist.
Um, Mr. Chair, as he's going to the podium, Ms. Bain, if you could just wait one second. I just wanted to point something out, that they mentioned that, you know, Ann had held that position for 19 years, but from day one, that was not a position for Ann, that was a calling, because she really did recognize and respect the sacrifices that the men and women in our military make every day, and she did everything she could to make sure that their children had no problems with Hampton City Schools or any other thing, so I can see why you got the award, because it really was not a position, it was a calling, and we respect you for that. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens, you know, I much prefer to be shining the spotlight on someone than to have this spotlight shone on me, but I do want to take this opportunity to thank all of you all for the opportunity to do this work. It's been amazing, and the truth is, I've been directed and supported by the board and the superintendent, and I know it's going to continue, so thank you.
So for our final recognition, each year, the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes board members, school board clerks, and superintendents for their dedication, time and hard work in improving boardmanship skills through VSPA meetings, conferences, board development and training, and active involvement in the association. VSPA members earn credits for VSPA Academy Awards, which are based on participation from July 1 to June 30th each year. There are five levels of awards, with certificates and pins awarded for particular levels. The VSPA Awards are presented annually to those individuals who meet the requirements. The first award we would like to acknowledge this evening is the Award of Recognition. The Award of Recognition is given to members who earn 15 credits in a year. So congratulations to our Vice Chair, Dr. Tina Banks Gray, school board member, Ms. Stephanie Jackson Afunja, school board member, Dr. Reginald Woodhouse, and our school board clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers, for each earning 15 credits in one year and the Award of Recognition. Would you four please join Dr. Haynes at the microphone to be recognized and receive your certificate? And before you all go back to your seats, let's get a picture. All right. Perfect. Thank you. Our next recognition is the Silver Pin and the Award of Excellence. The Award of Excellence is for those members who earn 48 credits in two years. Congratulations to our Chair, Dr. Richard Mason, school board member, Ms. Ann Cherry, and school board member, Mr. Jason Samuels, for earning the Award of Excellence. Would you please join Dr. Haynes at the microphone to be recognized and receive your certificate and pin?
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, smile. All right. I've learned to take several photos just to make sure all eyes are... And our final recognition this evening is the Highest Honor, the Award of Distinction. The Award of Distinction goes to members who earn 84 credits in two years. This award goes to school board member, Mr. Joseph Kilgore. Mr. Kilgore, congratulations. Mr. Kilgore is receiving a certificate and a starfish pin. And let's give everyone a round of applause. So congratulations again to our board members and our clerk for earning their VSPA Academy Awards, and Dr. Mason, that concludes tonight's recognition. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving along with item number three, the Consent Agenda, 3.01 Personnel Report 23-18, 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of September 20th, 2023, 3.03 School Board Consent to Receipt of Donations, October 2023, 3.04 Release from Compulsory Attendance/Religious Exemptions. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I've been moved and properly seconded by Ms. Afunja, I think, that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just for point of clarification and openness, that the item that deals with receipt of donations is because, so the public will know, that anytime the school division receives any gift in the amount of $500 and above, we must vote on it as a board.
Any other discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry.
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore.
Aye.
Mr. Samuels.
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse. Ms. Afunja.
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray.
Aye.
Dr. Mason.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is Superintendent and Staff Reports, and I will turn it over to Dr. Haynes, our Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Good evening, Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the Hampton School Board and the Hampton community. We're pleased to present tonight, under the One Community, One Transformation mantra, Master Plan 2.0, Intentional Planning for Student Success. For our board report this evening, Ms. Jamaica Pollard, Chief of Secondary School Leadership, will highlight the Academies of Hampton, Master Plan 2.0. She will be joined by Ms. Veronica Hurd, Director of the Academies of Hampton, who will further expand on our work for this school year.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes. Good evening, School Board Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray, members of the School Board, Hampton City School Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, and our Hampton community. I'm excited to be before you this evening as we celebrate the Academies of Hampton Master Plan 2.0. The presentation this evening will include information about structures, the intentional planning process, celebrations, and our next steps. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Veronica Hurd, Director of the Academies of Hampton.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard. Good evening, everyone. I am excited to be here, and so on behalf of the Academies of Hampton and Hampton City Schools, I would like to introduce you all to Master Plan 2.0, so thank you for this opportunity. So again, this is One Transformation, and we are looking at all aspects of Hampton City Schools to transform what it means to teach and learn, not only for our students, but for our community as well. I would just like for us to pause for a second, and if you have a piece of paper or a pencil, whatever the case may be, and you were to draw a star on that piece of paper. If you were to take a moment and just think to yourself, one young person that comes to mind, just one young person, this might be your child, a niece, a nephew, a grandchild, a godchild, whatever the case may be, but that one person that's personal and means something to you. Now reflecting on that one young person that is on your piece of paper there, maybe it's Jada, maybe it's Will, maybe it's Alana, whoever that is, that is your portrait of a Hampton graduate, and that is your North Star, and there's nothing that you wouldn't do for that young person. This young person, you have hopes, dreams, aspirations for them. You have a vision of what education looks like for them, but more than personally what they deserve from an educational system. And so that's what we're doing here in Hampton City Schools. We're not just looking at all our young people as a collective, we're looking at a collective of young people, and we're ensuring that each and every one of them walk across the stage, the portrait of a Hampton graduate, because that's what they deserve. So as a community, we are coming together as one community and one transformation to ensure that all our young people have the opportunity to graduate that portrait of a Hampton graduate. To do this, we cannot do it alone, so we have a community-connected governing structure. This is what makes us different from other school communities. Other school communities often transform or operate just as one governing body. We have our school division in addition to our community itself. What you will see here is a governing structure and governing body, as you can see. What you will notice here is that we now have a community convening organization, that is the Hampton Roads Regional Workforce Council. This is a new addition and celebration for us as a community. They ensure that throughout an entire transformation, that our community, business community, local and regionally, have an active voice in our transformation and helping us to meet the needs and demands of our transformation. In addition to this, of course, we have us, the Academies of Hampton and Hampton City Schools, our educational institution. In addition to that, we have what is known as internal and external organizations who will operate to uphold our academy model. So if you see here, we have the Steering Committee, of course, that is co-chaired by our Superintendent and City Manager. In addition to that, we have operating boards, and they are co- In addition to that, we have operating boards, and they are co-chairs of tactical teams that help to move our transformational, transformation forward through a tactical lens. In addition to that, you see tactical teams. Those tactical teams are cross-section of stakeholders, individuals who come together to drive out a task. So whatever that case may be, they operate, so for instance, we have Attack, Retain, and that is looking at the hiring structure of the Hampton City Schools to meet the demands of this model. I hope that makes sense. But again, what we're showing you here with all these arrows is that it's not us in isolation. It's not in isolation by any means, it's us working together in conjunction with one another for the collective impact, all working towards the portrait of a Hampton graduate, or for you all, for your young person at the center of your North Star. So here, when we look at the Workforce Camp, Councils, or the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, they are a convening organization, celebration, I cannot say it enough. But what they really do here is to help us to stay abreast of the trends of industry. So we can see that they help us to ensure that we have relevant industry data, governance structures, they help to ensure that we have the individuals involved in those governance structures. They will help to inform our work around work-based learning, what should young people learn and how are they learning, what are those relevant certifications that young people should leave, leave with. They will also support us with our signature experiences. In addition to that, we will have a shared accountability monitoring system that will include not only traditional educational measures, but also non-traditional educational measures as well. There is some question sometimes when we look ahead and we're saying, okay, we're in education, which is an institution that's stood still for a long time. But now to ensure that the young people who are coming from this educational system are prepared for life off of high school, we have to ensure that we're preparing them for work after high school. Science, technology, and engineering and mathematics are one of the driving industries that are moving education and the workforce forward. We know that the median income for young people who are in STEM is greatly, the median is ninety thousand compared to forty thousand other career fields. Now, to help our young people see themselves in STEM, it comes with creating opportunities in educational systems for them to see themselves in STEM, not just the careers themselves, but what a STEM mindset looks and means. Artificial intelligence, right, is one of those things that is part of a STEM mindset. We know artificial intelligence is making its way through all different industries, right? So some of that will be the technology that makes up artificial intelligence, such as we have academies and pathways that look at engineering, we have networking, we have digital shipbuilding, things of that nature. But where I would challenge us, and where we are being challenged, is that, yes, there are young people who are in these particular pathways that will be going into such industries, but we want all our young people to have STEM-minded concepts, no matter what they go into. Because STEM is not only just the technical side of things, it's the creative and innovative way of thinking to help address what our society is entering and embarking into. So I say that to say, when we're looking at the academies and pathways, and we have such an organization, such as the convening organization we have here, when we're looking at industry data, it's informing not only the academies and pathways that we have up and why we have them up, but then also what our young people are learning in those, in those academies and pathways, to then inform the credentialing and things that they take along with them to whether it's post-secondary or their future career fields. So the backbone organization helps to inform the work that we're doing, which has already informed the work, but it will also continue to inform the work as we reimagine what it means to teach and learn in Hampton City Schools. In addition to the convening organization, we also have a community-connected governance structure, again, Steering Committee, we have industry councils. Industry councils are the industry leaders who come together to discuss their industry, the trajectory of their industry, the needs of their industry, and then more importantly, how are they going to remain a globally competitive industry? What does that look like? When we have industry councils, they are working to inform the work that we're doing because we're not asking them to come and do us a favor, we're plugging into where their needs are sooner rather than later to then help our young people propel forward in those skill sets that are being, that are demanded to help move their particular industry forward. In addition to that, we have advisory boards. Advisory boards are those, and some of you have part taken on those advisory boards in our building. They're now creating opportunities for students and adults to learn more about industry. They're taking what is happening in industry, bringing it into our classroom, A, to help young people to become aware of industry and industry opportunities, but then also B, to help develop a technical skill set to help move the student forward who would like to one day become part of that industry. And of course, we have industry partners and academy partners as well. So when we're looking at Master Plan Two Point O, it's looking at, yes, we have the systems and structures up in our high schools, we're small learning career, communities around a career lens, college and career lens. But now when we're looking at Hampton City Schools, we are intentionally making sure that we operate as a division under a small learning community umbrella. That does not mean just high schools, that does not mean just elementary schools, that does not mean just middle schools, that means Hampton City Schools and the Academies of Hampton are one. And so to do this, everything that we've done and we continue to do comes under this umbrella. So we can see here that, of course, Hampton School Board and Hampton City Council, you work together, together to help us move our work forward. We also have division leadership, community collaboratives, and academy leadership to really help work in tune to move not only education forward, but also our community forward. So when we're seeing Master Plan Two Point O, it was done in a very intentional approach to ensure that only, not only are we moving together as one, but we're not just moving together in some areas of things. So with that being said, we have, with Master Plan Two Point O, we're very much in elements of visioning, right? So visioning is a step in this progress where we're coming together as a community, Hampton City Schools and the community members, to really define what are we working towards. And we know we're working towards the portrait of a Hampton graduate. So when we look at what the portrait of a Hampton graduate looks like, from hiring, from fiscal management, from organizational systems and structures, from curriculum, that all may look very differently, but the commonality is that collective impact towards the portrait of a Hampton graduate. I know I can feel Ms. Pollard behind me saying she's talking too much, but I'm going to speed it up. So you can also see in the visioning phase, we're coming together as a collective to say, what are the goals, what are the outcomes, and what are the outputs? That's the visioning phase, and we're in that in various entities of the work that we're doing. The next phase, when we're talking about intentional plonning, is the plonning itself. You have to be deliberate, and I hope I'm doing you proud, Mr. Kilgore, you have to be deliberate in your plonning and what you're plonning towards. Now through the visioning, we have identified what it is we're working towards, we have our goals, we have our outcomes, and we have our outputs. Now what's the plan to get us there, okay? And so looking at that, the project teams come together, they are now developing their project management tools, they're looking at resource lists, they're looking at communication structures, they're looking at budgets, and then the scheduling and timeline for the project. Once you've gone from the visioning, plonning, to implementation, now we're doing some stuff about it. And we do have some phases where we are in the implementation phase, but in the implementation phase is literally the project team now starts doing what you said you're going to do. And so we're looking at this not only from a pre-state, what it is beforehand, during, and then post, after the fact, what does that look like as well. So from here, we enter into, after we've implemented, we go into a reflective phase. And oftentimes, people get busy and they forget to reflect. But we have been intentional to make sure we put reflection in everything that we do in the work with Master Plan Two Point O, not only to develop it, but to also to implement it, because we want to learn and grow as we continue to move forward. So during the reflection phase, we're monitoring, we're looking at the data, did we meet the needs that we said we were going to do? Do we need a pivot? Do we need to adjust? What is, whatever the implementation just takes place, what are we taking from that? And that's how we go through this intentional plonning phase. So yes, it is a word, and we're hearing it a lot, but as Dr. Haynes says, we are doing this intentional planning for excellence, but this is the process when we're saying intentionally plonning. We are meaning it from start to finish when we do this. So I went quickly through to just show you, hey, we have a community behind us, and it's not just by namesake, they're informing the work that we're doing, and we're working together in an intentional way that has these various fragments or various stages along with them to help ensure that we're moving, but it's not in isolation, it's not going to be done overnight, and we don't want it to be done overnight because we're trying to stay ahead as we move forward for our young people. We can definitely celebrate that we have received federal funding in regards to gear up, to help our young people see themselves in college and to get ready for college sooner rather than later. So Class of twenty twenty-seven are considered our gear-up students, and we have, we will receive a hundred and eighty thousand annually to help them see themselves in college spaces. In addition to that, we have received, again, extended learning funding from the Virginia Department of Education. We have received the support of eight grants, eight grants for up to almost two million dollars out of a general assembly allocation of twelve million. So that is phenomenal to the work that we're doing and a testament that people are celebrating what we're doing, but they also want to see what we're doing, how we're doing, and how they can replicate our efforts. One of the things that you've been hearing a lot about recently, about one of the pillars of the Master Plan Two Point O, are the signature experiences. Now, signature experiences are various ways to help our young people, their identity development, their career development, and then they're also a self-development tool. So it's not just look yourself, see yourself in this different space, we are helping to hone into the young person and helping them to fine-tune who they are, see who they are, who they want to become, help them to be exposed to career identity tools, and then more importantly, in addition to that, we are helping them to start developing skill sets to be successful in whatever comes next for them. Here's the work-based learning continuum, you can see grades three through twelve are already been identified, you can see thematically what the young person has taken along with them, which again is a career identity indicator in addition to identity indicator, and I'm speaking to some of those from the psych field and social work field, that we know these are pillars that help young people to move along and then see themselves in different spaces. What we want our young people to have the opportunity is when we're saying signature experiences, we're not just saying that it's just one more way to check the box. There's young people who unfortunately do not have the opportunity to do certain things simply because of circumstances. There are certain things that young people all have the opportunity, should have the opportunity to experience. So what we're doing, we're creating ways for young people around those themes that you just saw, to have what are known as various touchpoints towards a goal. The culminating goal, for instance, could be self-awareness. We want our young people all to walk away with a sense of self in third grade. So that's the goal that we're working towards. To get there, it doesn't happen overnight, as you all know, there are these various touchpoints. They are fun, engaging ways to incorporate learning, family involvement, community partnerships, and to help young people to see themselves in this awareness phase, but then also to bring in academics with that. Through these various touchpoints that build upon each other, they work towards what is known as a culminating experience. This culminating experience is a space of celebration where the young person then gets the opportunity to demonstrate what they've learned, to demonstrate that now they are self-aware, but then also in addition to that, to help them transition to the next phase of their career, or career or identity development phase, if that makes sense, or the next grade level. So what you will see here is that this was not all said and done. We're doing tier one, where young people will all have the opportunity to have a signature experience. In addition to that, we know, for instance, all young people will work towards self-awareness, but what we want to ensure is that sometimes tier one, some young people need additional supports to reach those goals, and so that's what we're doing. Extended learning is going to come in and enrich and extend tier one opportunities for young people who need additional resources to reach that goal. And so we can see here, tier two and tier three will have enrichment opportunities that'll extend from tier one to then help young people to be successful outside of that tier one goal. I hope that makes sense. We have approaching milestones, as I mentioned before, we have received the funding from the Virginia Department of Education to hire, we recently hired two middle school enrichment coordinators, we already have four at the high school, we've hired two. We're preparing to hire two more enrichment coordinators, they will be from a K eight, and so they're going to help us to start piloting K eight extended learning opportunities for our young people and serve tier two and tier three. And so we're piloting so we can continue to grow and fine-tune. In addition to that, you will see that we're going to start implementing in middle school, the enrichment opportunities at the schools that are listed above, so Andrews, Eaton, Lindsay, Phoenix, Phoenix Sims, and Tarant. Those are the schools covered by the Virginia Department of Education grant. But our school division does not want to leave any schools out, and so we have secured the funding to also support Jones and Kilgore, and so they will also be part of this opportunity as well, and you can see that fervor along. In addition to then sending enrichment opportunities that we're implementing, we also have our division community connected experiences that we're developing, the visioning and plonning phases of those, and that will be for tier one structures. So tier one structures, we're working on those, and we're also working on tier two and tier three structures in conjunction with each other, because we want to ensure that young people are not being left behind. So as you can see here, we continue to build upon what we're doing with our extended enrichment opportunities, and then also we look to have implementation of phase three, which will be our summer opportunities this upcoming summer, that will blend both tier one and then also tier two and tier three. I would love for Dr. Haynes to just look at this and see the wonderful pictures up here, but also with that being said, even greater than that, it's not just the pictures that are up here, but what this promise represents. So this is known as the Academies of Hampton Brown Promise, and this is what our students have asked us to promise them when we're reimagining education. And so when we are reimagining education, we really want to make sure that we honor what our young people have asked for us. I'm looking, Dr. Haynes, do you want to read it, or do you want me to read it? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so our young people have said, "In my small learning community, we are passionate about learning. Each academy is a family that helps all students own their education. This journey builds a tradition of trust and accountability, fun, engaging, real-world experiences in and out the classroom, build our confidence and prepare us for the future." So when we're talking about signature experiences, community-connected learning, Master Plan Two Point O, portrait of a Hampton graduate, at the end of the day, no matter what else, if you don't take anything from here today, we want to make sure that everything that we do in Hampton City Schools and the city of Hampton, we uphold our promise that our young people have asked us to make to them, and we obviously have said yes, to create a fun, engaging, real-world experiences in and out the classroom, to build their confidence and to prepare them for a future that is awaiting them. I did want to just take a moment to just quickly introduce you to the Academies of Hampton team. Ms. Sharon Dixon is back here, and Ms. Sharon Dixon led the expo that many of you attended today, so she oversaw that and got it to where it was today, so thank you for that. We also have Ms. Erica Spencer. Ms. Erica Spencer is new to our team, she is our business partner integration specialist, and so she's going to help us to hone into that community-connected backbone. And we also have Ms. Alpatina Jackson, she has been doing twofold, she is the enrichment coordinator at Pho, Phoebus High School, but then also she has been helping us be the coach role as we're in transition for that. And so this will continue to grow as we continue to grow, but at this time, I did want to say thank you for the time, and of course, we look forward to continuing to collaborate with you, and we also would love for you to open certain doors for us as we would look forward to creating more opportunities for young people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from board members? Mr. Kilgore?
I would just say, Ms. Hurd, you definitely didn't talk too much, and that was an exceptional presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Mr. Samuels?
Yeah, thank you. I just piggyback on what Joe said, exceptional presentation. I have one quick question as it relates to the Gear Up Grant and Extended Enrichment Learning Grants and funding that we received to support the Academies Two Point O. And so I'm assuming that these fern, these funds will be used to extend the learning community beyond the classroom? So can you share some of these experiences that our young people, especially and particularly middle school, will be exposed to?
Yeah, so with Gear Up, that is primarily for Cohort Twenty Twenty Seven, so that, our rising ninth graders. Gear Up was actually part of middle school the last two years, so it was introduced during the seventh grade year, so young people had experiences going to more colleges, colleges coming in, and things of that nature. So we're following that cohort up. Now, when we look at the extended enrichment for the middle schools, since that's a particular question, we, all the signature experiences that you're discussed, that we're discussing here, they are going to be built in. So we are, I'm trying to give you one example, so for instance, seventh grade is coming to mind, seventh grade is this community impact, community, my community impact. We know research tells us time and time again, young people who connect, connected to their community and understand their culture, outperform anybody else. And so we are creating intentional structures for tier one, where young people will have a deepened understanding of the Hampton community...
where young people will have a deepened understanding of the Hampton community by going out into the Hampton community, seeing the Hampton community, celebrate the different places of the Hampton community, whether that be through going to the Hampton University, going even down to the Hampton History Museum, even just seeing how some of the new construction places are coming up in our community and what does that mean. So just A, see in the community. But then also in addition to that, we want our young people to understand the different cultures who make up our community, right? And so learning more about what is culture, what does it mean to be cultured? And then in addition to that, where is your culture? And so helping them to peel back in tier one and structure and what culture means and having those opportunities. Now, to deepen that, we're looking at tier one again, having a cultural fair for young people. That's where they're working toward our culminating activity. So now the extension area would be that to take smaller groups of young people who may be needing some additional support in school to come to school more frequently or they need some additional support around some academics. So we will have smaller groups of students come after school and stay with us on weekends. What we're going to do with them is create mentoring opportunities that will allow them to connect, say Hampton University students, and then they can build a mentoring relationship with them. But also, we want our young people to then maybe solve a problem within the community itself, right? And so we would see if there's an authentic problem that's going on in the community, they can be engrossed into what that problem is, researching about it, and then work together with their mentors to come to some solution for that. One other layer that I want to add to this is that we're not in isolation from the community, so working closely with the community, but also our families. So we want to bring our families along with us. So one of the evenings through the extended enrichment opportunity will be just coming together over dinner. I'm making it up, saying spaghetti dinner. They're going to come together for spaghetti dinner. We're going to have a storyteller there, say we'll work with young audiences, and then they'll go through a storytelling process. But then the student and their parents will share stories that celebrate their families. And so A, it's twofold. It's learning the power of storytelling. They're building theirselves up through learning more about their community through this storyteller opportunity as their parents and the child are developing a story of them, which is building their culture. And so that, so that, stay with me, so that piece here, the story they've just developed, now if they were behind in, say, English class or whatever, now they've just written this story about their family, we could work with their teacher to say, hey, they may not have done well on that paper, right? Maybe they got a D here, but take a look at this. Can they supplement what they didn't do well here with this story about their family? It shows them that they're able to do it. Can we replace that with that? And that's what we're trying to do. We're looking at that individual student, where are their needs, and then creating non-traditional ways to help move them forward. I know that was a long answer, right?
It was a thorough answer.
Thank you.
And thank you so much, Ms. Bowler.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from board members? Dr. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Ms. Heard, thank you so much for rolling out and giving us more behind the scenes of Master Plan Two Point Oh. And thank you for giving us that information on the intentional planning phases, the visioning, planning, implementation, and reflection. That was absolutely amazing to get more clarity on that. Now, I wanted to ask you, we are incorporating capstone projects, is that correct? Now, so when I saw that, I was very excited because that final project that allows students to showcase their knowledge and skills, that's been gained throughout those academic programs and to apply them in real-world problems and issues, that's just so beneficial. So I was so excited to see that component being added to the program. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yeah, so basically, and Dr. Harris is here too, I feel like dragging you up. I wouldn't drag, I would politely invite him. But we're looking to have capstones, so our seniors, as you're aware, have senior capstones, which basically takes everything that they've done across their four years, and now they are able to solve a problem and they have a portfolio and they've done something about it. What we want to do, so through those transitional years, so our young people who are transitioning, say, from eighth to ninth, they would have a, I'm going to say, it is going to be a capstone, so it would be a capstone. So they will mirror what the high school seniors are doing, where again, they have the opportunity to build across the skill set they've already developed. They then solve a problem. They not only solve it, they do something about it, and then they celebrate what they've done by sharing with others. And then again, we'll do that through the other pivotal one, which will be five through six as well.
I love it. Okay. Fantastic, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate you all. But again, we're all working together, moving it in the right direction, and we look forward to continue our partnerships with you all as well. So thank you very much for that.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Afonda?
Just real quick, I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation. Definitely it was very thorough, and your passion is evident, and so I'm always so pleased to see that. I can really appreciate just the model of partnership and collaboration specifically with our business community just to get that industry data that you're using, that we're using to drive forward, how the curriculum will work and what type of experiences our young people will have. I think it's so, so critical. And what, you know, I see by us inviting so many more partners to the table is that we will then have more opportunities for folk with, or children or students with different abilities. And so that really excites me, you know, the more opportunities we can provide for children across all spectrums, you know, from one ability to those who have differing abilities is just going to be so powerful as it already is. And so the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, I think it sounds like was really an exciting organization, and that that's going to be really key and integral in providing those opportunities and that data to drive how we move forward. Can you tell me a little bit more, just real quickly about that? Who's on it? Who's comprised of?
Yeah, so they are a workforce council, and so basically, they're the regional workforce council. Sean Avery is the president, CEO of the council itself. They have a governing body. Jimmy Gray is part of that governing body. They have an executive committee as well. We can certainly provide you a list with their executive board, so you can see the various members are on there. But they're a regional entity, so it's not only just that we have the luxury of plugging into the regional one, we also have the luxury of plugging into the state one because of their connections as well. May I share something really funny? It's not necessarily funny, but it's intriguing. When we had the opportunity to go present to this, the Deputy Secretary of Education, Mr. Sean Avery, I noticed that he wasn't in attendance because I saw the name badge, and I was like, hmm, interesting. So then I had a conversation with him later. He only wasn't there because he was invited to the president's conference in DC to discuss the work that they're doing as the workforce council on their behalf. So it was very interesting that they were at the president's conference while we were here, talking about the educational lines. So in that moment, I was like, okay, maybe we really are into something here because we're getting the right calls in the right places. But again, we can definitely share that list of the individuals with you, with their executive committee, and then they also have other committees as well. I don't want to speak on it, but I don't have all that knowledge, but we can definitely share that information.
I'm just really wondering what there, any youth were on it, but thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from board members? Thank you so much for a wonderful presentation, and I tell you, Master Plan Two Point Oh is truly excellence with intentionality, and I'm certainly looking forward to all that will happen and occur this year with Hampton City Schools, of course. So thank you very much.
Appreciate you all, thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Chair, excuse me, Superintendent.
Mr. Chair, our next report will be from Ms. Brittany Branch, our chief financial officer. Just an update on the financial report and business operations.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, school board members, Dr. Haines, and the Hampton community. Tonight, I will be presenting the monthly operating report, monthly operating report for both July and August of 2023. So at the end of July, our revenues totaled eleven million dollars. At the end of August, that number increased to twenty-three point seven million dollars. In both of those months, that was an increase when compared to the prior fiscal year, and that increase is driven by additional state funding and of course, the timing of our local governing body payment. Then also, our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances, they total thirty-eight million and fifty-eight million for July and August respectively. Within both reports, you will see that we have added an additional line item that shows you what the encumbrances that were carried forward from fiscal year 2023 into fiscal year 2024. And there is a placeholder for city-approved carryover funds. We did submit that resolution to the city finance department, and we expect that that will be on the city council's agenda for vote soon. If approved and once approved, that amount will be added to a later monthly operating report. For fiscal year 2024, our budget again is based on a March average daily membership of nineteen thousand and thirty-six. Once the fall membership report is complete, we just do a preliminary look to see if we need to maybe plan for any adjustments to our budget at ADM if needed, but an update will be provided to the school board once that review is complete. And then as always, in both the July and August report, you have a list of transfers to and from the technology classification for your review. And that concludes tonight's July and August 2023 board reports.
Any questions from board members, comments? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that concludes the reports from the superintendent.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is deliberation, five point zero one, revision of school board policy AF comprehensive plan. Five point zero two, revision of school board policies BBFA slash GBACB, conflicts of interest and disclosure of economic interests. Five point zero three, revision of school board policy BDA, board meetings. Five point zero four, revision of school board policy BDD, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. Five point zero five, revision of school board policy BDDG minutes. Five point zero six, revision of school board policy BHB, school board member in-service activities. Five point zero seven, revision of school board policy CBA, qualifications and duties of the superintendent. And five point zero eight, revision of school board policy CBG, evaluation of the superintendent. All of those items are with our board attorney, Ms. Joy Brown. Comments or any clarifying questions? Any questions from board members? Here we go, we'll move those things to action for the next meeting. Next item on the agenda, items for action. Six point zero one, revision of school board policy JECB, admission of non-resident students. Six point zero two, revision of school board policy JFCF, wellness policy on nutrition and physical activity. Six point zero three, revision of school board policy JGB, prohibition of bullying. Six point zero four, revision of school board policy JGD, student short-term suspension. Six point zero five, revision of school board policy JGDA, disciplining students with disabilities. Six point zero six, revision of school board policy JGE, student long-term suspension or expulsion. And six point zero seven, revision of school board policy JGEA, admission of long-term suspended or expelled students. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of action items six point zero one through six point zero seven as a block.
Second. It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve items for action six point zero one through six point zero seven as a block. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to point out with respect to action item six point zero one, revision of school board policy JECB, admission of non-resident students. At our last meeting, there was some discussion about foster kids, and I would just want to thank the superintendent and his staff for getting back with us because I've explained to a couple of board members, but I didn't to each one, that it was determined that that was not covered in the McKenney-Vento information, but they are going to follow the VSBA guidelines, which states that that information about foster kids will be put into the policy that speaks to admission for students, and that will be brought to this board in January. So just want to make that clarification.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Ms. Bowser, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonda?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carry. Next item is item number seven, deliberation first read. We have seven point zero one, review of school board policy EGAA, reproduction of copyrighted materials. Seven point zero two, school, revision of school board policy GBBB, acceptable use policy. Seven point zero three, revision of school board policy GBBE, staff laptop computer agreement. Seven point zero four, deletion of school board policy GBBC, electronic mail. Seven point zero five, review of school board policy GBBD, social media use. Seven point zero six, revision of school board policy IIBE, acceptable use policy. Seven point zero seven, deletion of school board policy IIBEB, electronic mail. Seven point zero eight, review of school board policy KBE, internet policy. And those items rest with Mr. Eagles, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Dr. Mason, and members of the board. It's been a while. As you're well aware, from time to time, we need to review revised technology policies at a minimum every two years, and we are at that mark. So I'm just going to go through these in order. Some of these have no changes. For example, the first one regarding reproduction of copyright materials, there's actually no revisions to that particular policy being recommended. In regards to the next one, GBBB, acceptable use policy, there's just a couple of changes with this. The first one is on page four. We did add an item, a sentence to number eight regarding charges. It's really just being proactive in making staff aware that from time to time, we send large updates to a computer to have it updated for a variety of reasons. You've probably done this yourself. When your iPhone needs to be updated, it can be a rather large download. If you're at work, it's no big deal, but if you're at home connected to the internet, these things can happen automatically. So again, putting this in the policy. We also added number ten for email. That is actually the email policy that's being deleted, recommended for deletion. We're doing that just to make things a little simpler. This is what the VSBA has done over the last couple of years as well. So again, it's just to consolidate, make our lives a little bit easier. That's the only changes to acceptable use policy. I'm going to skip over GBBE, the staff laptop computer agreement. We'll come to that in just a moment. The next one again is GBBC, staff email policy, which is being recommended for deletion because that's now being incorporated into the acceptable use policy. On the social media use, GBBD, there's just a couple of changes. So of course, Twitter is now X, so we have noted that accordingly. And then there was one small change. Back when the social media policy was first being developed, teachers might post assignments on social media. That's actually not part of our standard procedure. It's not what our instructional staff does. We use our instructional digital platforms for posting assignments, so we would not want to encourage staff to do that. So those are the only changes to the social media policy. The next one is the student acceptable use policy, IIBE. And again, we've added identical language regarding the email policy. Again, consolidating just like we did with the staff email policy. And we also added the sentence at the end regarding, again, the possibility that large downloads could happen, in this case with Chromebooks. And again, we have not encountered any issues with that. We're just being proactive to make staff and students aware. The next policy, IIBEB, again, is being recommended for deletion because that is being consolidated into the acceptable use policy. And again, that is what, we're just following what VSBA has been doing over the last couple of years. And that brings us to internet privacy, KPE. And again, we are not recommending any changes for that. Going back to the staff laptop computer agreement, I'm going to introduce the Assistant Director of Information Technology, Dr. James Maxlow.
Good evening. Policy GBB dash E is the policy we use because we issue community devices to fortunately all of our staff. This one has the most substantial suggested changes of all the policies for technology tonight. Most of them, however, serve the purpose merely of rewriting text for clarity on both the part of the employee and of the school division. So of all of the text that's been struck through and is in red at the start of this policy here, that's not being removed, it's simply being rewritten later on in the policy. The next four to five- The next four to five paragraphs in blue are additions, but again, they're just rewriting the existing bullet points from above for greater clarity. There are a couple of substantial changes, though, for your consideration. We are now informing employees by way of this policy that, of course, they need to return any HHS-owned computing device that they have no later than the last day of their employment with Hampton City Schools, should that day come. And moreover, that if there is any kind of reason that a staff computing device is not returned by the final day, the division retains the right and the option to consider withholding a final paycheck until that device may be returned. We don't expect that that would ever be used, but we do suggest that it be put into the policy should we have that situation that we would have to deal with. Any further changes, again, in blue after that point, are again, just rewritten versions of what is being struck through from the bulleted section above.
Thank you, Dr. Maxlow. Any questions?
Questions from board members? All right. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is number eight, Hearing of Any Delegations or Presentation of Any Written Communications or Petitions. Ms. Bowser, would you please read the protocol, because I do have two.
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by 6:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers' comments on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
All right. Thank you very much. As your name is called, please approach the center mic here and state your name and address. Mr. David Dietrich.
Good evening, Chairman Mason, members of the school board, and Superintendent Haynes. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. I come before you again this evening, first of all, with some amusement. After month after month, year after year, it appears to me this is some sort of a game for your organization, your school system, that you're going to outlast me, and you may very well be right in this game that we're playing here. I'm also saddened that you don't take my admonition seriously, that you don't think the school system is important enough to accept the challenge that I've been giving you after all these years. There are at least eight, in your leadership, in your school system, at least eight of you who call yourselves doctor. Three school board members, superintendent, and four in the division leadership. What does that mean? What is the value of those titles to the school system? What are you actually doing for the children, the students of this school system? Dr. Haynes, you've been a leader in this school system for 28 years, and you appear to be very proud of that. But so what? What have you actually done for the children in this school system? How, what is the value of your experience and education for them? Tonight, there were a number of awards, awarding yourselves for accomplishments. Okay, so what does that do for the children? What have they gained by your additional education? It's not clear to me, and I don't know how you make it clear to anybody else. How do you determine the success of the students in this school system? I saw other presentations on academies and feeling good about themselves, spending more money. What does that do? What's the value of money in the school system? How do you actually measure success? You talk about the mission statement, to ensure excellence in the school system. What does that mean? That's a superlative. That means it's compared to something else, to something that's not excellent. Well, how do you measure that? Just by claiming excellence, that doesn't make it so. You should be going out of your way to prove to members of this community, the students, and others outside the community that you truly are excellent, that you are better than every other school system in the state of Virginia. And I don't see that. I don't see any interest in it at all. I don't see any pride in this school system. I'd sure like to see you move ahead on this. Thank you very kindly.
Next, we have Mr. Johnny Carroll. The handwriting, Carroll the last name, sir? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Johnny Carroll. I am a resident of the city of Hampton, and I have a very serious grievance that I must bring to you.
Mr. Carroll, can I get you to state your address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. That is 3608 Victoria Boulevard.
Thank you.
Thank you. The reason why I'm here tonight is because of the First Amendment. Now, the First Amendment guarantees everyone a very important right, and that right, most importantly, is the right to free speech. And I use free speech every time I can when Hampton High School is playing football. Yes, and I do use a bullhorn, and you will hear me when they are out there on the field telling the masses or mounts me, "Go Crabbers, go Crabbers, go." And if they're not saying they're not going for it, I'm going to tell them, "All right, all you Crabber fans out there, make some noise." And what am I telling them when they make a touchdown? That's what I paid my $7 for. And now, what I can't understand is, when I go to the gate at Darling Stadium, I can't understand why they take my bullhorn and say that it's a disturbance and a nuisance. What happened to my First Amendment rights, people? Tell me. It's not just because that I'm a graduate, that I am a spectator there at Darling Stadium, if you excuse me. I am a graduate of Hampton High School, class of 1989. And this wonderful ball cap that you're seeing means that I'm a veteran of six years of dedicated service to the United States Army, in which I swore to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, which guarantees every American in this room and beyond the right to free speech. All I'm asking is that you just recognize that and let me use my bullhorn. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Next item on the agenda is Items for Information. 9.01, Next Meetings. The next work session will be held on October 18th at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street. And the next regular meeting will be held on November 1st, right back here at Jones Magnet Middle School. 9.02, Other Items for Information. I'll start with you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On September 21st, Hampton City Schools, in collaboration with the city of Hampton and the Hampton Workforce Council, received the 2023 Workforce Innovation Award under the category of the Education for the Intentional Partnership surrounding the academies of Hampton. I would like to thank Dr. Mason and members of the administrative teams at the respective schools. We had quite a few executive principals and academy principals, academy coaches, extended learning coordinators there to support as well, help accept the award, as well as our staff, who continue to work collaboratively with a variety of stakeholders to create meaningful learning experiences for our students. Next, our school social work department is preparing for the Second Annual Mental Welfare to be held on October 30th from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Hampton Roads Convention Center. This event is free to Hampton City Schools' families. Parents and students should plan to attend together to enjoy food, mental health and wellness sessions, games, and a whole lot of fun. Lastly, I'd like to share that during the month of September, I, along with members of the division leadership team, have had the opportunity to visit 20 schools, 20 of our school staffs and faculty meetings, and I'm looking forward to meeting with the remainder of our school staff over the next couple of months. During these meetings, it has been great to engage in dialogue with our teachers, but it has also been a wonderful opportunity to highlight a number of academic accomplishments for our students and staff. For example, we are extremely proud of the fact that all of our schools are once again fully accredited without conditions. Our on-time graduation rate remains above 95% and a dropout rate below 1%. Looking forward to visiting the remainder of our schools and celebrating how we showcase excellence with intentionality.
Can you say that last part again for the listening public about the accreditation portion?
We are extremely proud of the fact that, once again, 100% of our schools are fully accredited without conditions. Our on-time graduation rate remains above 95% and our dropout rate below 1%.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Haynes. Board members, any other items for information, comments?
Just dropping.
May I add something to what?
Yes, Dr. Woodhouse.
That there are, in our area here in the Hampton region, Hampton Roads area, that there are only five high, there are only five school divisions that have 100%. We're among the top five. And so, I think that when you look at the educational level of what our students are doing compared to the state and nationwide, I think we are considered to be among the top when it comes down to education. Sometime, you know, we don't get all the credit that's due us, which is not, you know, our fault all the time, you know? But people come to me quite often complimenting me for the great work that the Hampton City School System is doing with their children, and they are glad that their children are part of the Hampton City School System. I heard someone say something about our doctoral program, and I know we're not supposed to address anything, but I want to let everyone know that personally, I was a, I was a public school teacher for three years. I have a bachelor's degree in management. I have two master's degrees, one in theology and one in ministry. I have two doctorate degrees, two earned doctorate degrees, a doctorate in ministry, and a doctorate in healthcare administration. I know what education is all about, and I'm proud to say that my children are graduates of the Hampton City School System. I have grandchildren that are in the Hampton City School System, and I'm proud that they are part of the Hampton City School System. And Hampton is one of the best school systems, as far as I am concerned personally, in the nation. Thank you very much for allowing me to say that.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Woodhouse. Any other comments for information from board members?
I want to thank, excuse me, Mr. Chair, Dr. Woodhouse for those comments. But the truth be told, this community is well aware of how awesome Hampton City Schools is. I had a city council member tell me recently, they cannot have won the All-America City Award were it not for the successes of Hampton City Schools, because that's what took them over the top. And we all know that the school division is the economic engine that drives the community. And if that is the case, we're in first class, and I'm proud of it and not ashamed to say it. Thank you.
And I do just want to add to the community, board members are recognized tonight for the work that they are doing in terms of furthering their knowledge and education as it relates to serving as a board member, their continuing education courses. So, the awards that you saw that board members received tonight were presented based on the work that's done through VSBA. And so, I want to thank my board members for continuing to further their knowledge and understanding in working with VSBA so that we can continue to do the great things here in Hampton City Schools for our students. So, thank you all for all of the hard work that you're doing to further your knowledge in this area. So, without any further.
I've got to further do.
Oh, wait a minute.
Because just based on what you said, I've got to go back here and find what Zion said, because I think that is the best way to close this meeting. Zion said, "Do not be interrupted by intimidation," and I think that's the best way to close the meeting, sir.
All right. Sounds good. With no further business to be brought before this board, I declare this meeting adjourned.